All right, please rise. We're in clutch.
I would like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda.
Any discussion on tonight's agenda? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the May 4th meeting.
Certainly.
Any discussion on the meeting minutes? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. That brings us to Regina.
Okay, so varsity baseball's still playing, the softball team lost tonight, which is okay. We play three games this week, four games this week, three in a row, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Friday. The track invite on Friday went really well. Luke Kingston got third in the shot put, Eddie Kiefer got first in her 3,000 meter. Caroline Kiefer got first in her 800 meter. And then the four by four team of Mallory Rice, Ilarae, Eddie Kiefer, and Mary Claire Rollins also got first. And then our golf team is also doing very well, last I knew they were on. So, our music department is prepping for their spring concerts. We have a whole band recording day, band orchestra on June 5th. The chorus is, we're doing our virtual ones. Miss Downs' rehearsal choir gets to have their in-person concert because there's only 13 of them, that's next Tuesday. So, I'm their choreographer, I'm very excited for that one. And then our AP exams have started, I believe the first actual exam was today. With computer science, and then prom is Saturday. Are there any questions?
Where you going?
Prom?
Yeah. And where is prom?
At Twin Silos in La Bona, yeah.
Have a wonderful time.
Thank you.
Take a lot of pictures and
I will try.
Trusting you to share them with all of us.
She's got it. She's got it.
She's got it covered. Miss Matthews got it covered.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gianna? It's a sister tag team.
Yeah, it was gonna be on me, but for being out earlier.
Where's your role, guys?
This first week of May, middle school students continued learning with second step with Mrs. Holt. A social emotional learning program which students give, which gives students opportunity to learn about handling emotions and interacting with others. Recent topics include stereotypes, gender-based harassment, strategies for being an upstander, and being our authentic selves. Thank you to the students who helped decorate the walls at the counseling office. This year, the K-12 art show will be virtual and displayed on a website due to COVID restrictions and social distancing. Ms. Antonucci, Ms. Adams, and Mr. Wedge will be building web galleries and the art will be shared via email and social media at the beginning of June. Black pieces will be on display in person during the budget vote. The middle school and high school student council are currently planning a final spirit week in the second week of June, which will include the themed dress up days. Our hope to provide one more opportunity for students to share this full spirit before we depart for summer. The middle school patrons team competed at their final competition last Friday and came in first place. They read 3,000, 3,455 pages. That's 14 novels and two short stories. This patrons team showed a remarkable aptitude for self-motivation to read, the ability to remember facts about what they've read and to operate as a team. Congratulations to the first place middle school patrons team. Modified softball and baseball have had start games with modified baseball playing as we speak, and some modified softball having two home games last week on Friday and Saturday, and one tomorrow in Paladonia. Modified track and field has an awake meet this Wednesday in La Bona. Almost again. Any questions?
Excellent report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it's still on. A sleepwear. Okay, and now SCI gets to follow children.
Absolutely. So, as we move through the building project phase, there's lots of different steps. And as you know, it's a longer process. When we did originally have our proposal of our budget, you know, we based it on the market at that time. There's lots of changes and you go from your schematic design to more of your very detailed design. And so with that, we always want to be very conscientious of where we are in regards to our budget and that we are still including as many of the items in our project, but also being very fiscally minded on where we stand. So I did ask Gary and Ted to come today just to give us an update of where we are in the process and where we stand. And I might ask questions.
Good evening. Gary, I'm from the construction manager group. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you this evening. I did give a single page handout. And I just want to speak to that for a moment. So, in this process of developing the project, there's typically three layers of drawings that Ted and his group are preparing. First level is schematic design, it kind of equated to being an airplane flying and we're at 5,000 foot. And so at the schematic design level, we're really about that elevation right now of details, so there's not. So they're working on the architectural drawings, what we based our estimate on is good architectural drawings, what we typically expect at this level. The MEP, mechanical, local plumbing and site, they were still working on, wasn't available at the time the estimate was done. So we're carrying essentially repairing square footage costs, doing our due diligence, recognizing based on past history and doing so many projects in the past rural districts, what we should be carrying at this level for square footage. So we would expect at the next level, which will be at the end of this month, is the design development. Now we're bringing a plane in at about 25,000 feet, so now we're seeing more detail and more development of the documents. And then at that point, we'll have the MEP drawings, the site drawings to do a more detailed estimate from. And then we're going to later in the summer come to the, sorry, the construction documents or the set that's going to go to SED for review. That's when the plane is hitting the runway. And that will have full detail and that estimate will be really nailed down at that point. But at this stage in the game, we are estimating right now, we're slightly over budget. At 153,000, over budget right now. And that's, that's everything in the project that we know of today, right? So, a good place to be. At the schematic design level, I want to report to you that we're at that number, we're at a good place. We're not at a place that we would go, oh my gosh. We're not. It's where we almost expected to be. So, I'm comfortable at that level. And periodically, as I say, as we work through the documents, we'll be reporting back to you. This was just, I just gave you for sake of argument tonight, just this one page summary. We'll issue a, we're going to publish a report and it'll be a significant report of this schematic design estimate. So that will do here in the coming week or two. So, I also wanted to just add that the construction world is facing headwinds as well. I don't know how closely we all follow, but shocked to walk in Home Depot last week and see that on the OSB or in the Strand Board, aspenite is $48 a sheet. So what we're recognizing is there's a significant cost escalation of destruction materials. It is almost difficult to try and predict. Steel has gone up 20% for the last several months. Electrical metallic tubing, E and T, metal tubing for electrical, it's, it's nothing you can even buy it. It's just, it's a crazy world. So we're doing our very best and recognizing that and building that into this estimate as well. So it's, so it's being a common sport, thus far ability as well. As, as time goes on, there's more.
But Gary, when does the, when can you, when do you think the plane's going to hit the runway?
So the forecast was to submit to SED in August. And Ted can elaborate on that and talk to that, but the schedule shows the team is going to submit this date in August. So the expectation was that, right now, SED's running 16, 18 weeks on reviews.
Am I far off when I say I think construction materials for the most part are about 2 to 3X what they were a little over a year ago?
Or vintage, yeah, yeah. Yeah, like I just mentioned, steel in the last several months has gone well over 200%. It's, it's crazy.
Okay.
So it's something to be aware of and you need to just understand that it's, it's a reality we're in right now.
Yeah.
And
Two things fell off on Mike. Based on your experience, when are we, why are we going to vote a bid? Give us your best guess.
Sure, so the forecast right now will be, SED will state in August, hopefully it come up in December, and then we will be out the bid January probably. Expectation to start construction will be a full blown start at this point next year.
Okay.
So the, the schedule shows that April may start, I'd like to start April, I'd like to start too. That's, that's what I'm going.
Second question, you've kind of answered that for Mike. We've got 15,550,000 to play with.
Yeah.
Can we do basically what we'd like to do?
That's my hope.
Going over if you had to say so today?
That is my hope, yes. And I have to say that because I don't control the market. I don't control the crazy growth we're looking at right now.
Okay.
So when you get, when your reports in a week or so, will you detail what's in the incidental?
Yes. Yes, it'll be, this will have substantial, 18 pages. So I just gave you this summary sheet tonight, but the report will have all 18 detail behind it and you'll be able to see the details and all that as well. That's additional of this. Yes. There'll be a schedule in there. Now, the schedule I'm speaking to will be in that report as well.
So if that timeline stands, start 2022, spring finish estimated, so hopefully.
We want to be down by August of 23 because we have to hand out cost reports in by December of 23. So that gives us three months to close up the contracts.
And that's really important because if we close out in December of 23, it allows us to get a full year of building aid in the next year's budget.
That's a hard best date, December 23.
Scope updates. Ted Mountain, SCI, good to see everybody again. Thank you for inviting me out. Gary had the tough job with the estimating this time, but I just wanted to update the board a little bit on what's happening, you know, behind the scenes. We're doing a lot of meetings with the user groups and the spaces we've been working in. Quite a few meetings on the auditorium, quite a few meetings on the Field of Dreams, a lot of meetings on the gym and steam spaces. That schematic design phase that Gary talked about is, a lot of it for us is a research phase and a time when we're meeting with people to get more information about what the space needs to have in it and how we can tailor the design to the goals of the curriculum and so forth. So, things are happening right now in some of those areas, Field of Dreams. We have a new design that's just about to come out, as Gary mentioned, for design development phase, which will be the end of this month. And there's going to be a lot more detail with that. So, we've been looking at grading and drainage of the field, also the exact field size. We've talked a lot about the details around where the, where the stands are going to be, the goalposts. We're getting into some more nitty gritty now of exactly what that field can look like and how it's going to be graded and so forth. In the auditorium, we've done quite a bit of research on rigging work. Continued that back house design, lighting and sound designs are progressing, band and chorus rooms as well as the HVAC design for that space. And then the gym, we've got the new layout with storage bleachers. We're working on that corridor connector, if you remember, that's going to link the lobby in front of the auditorium back to the gymnasium. So we're working on that design, how the corridors are going to look back there. Some of the ceiling designs are going to be in this design development package at the end of the month. And then we've also looked at quite a bit of redesign and how we can best make the spaces function underneath the gym. So that's not only the steam rooms. We've met with that group a couple of times, we're looking at different designs for, for that space, but also the other spaces down there, which included the fitness center, exercise room, locker, locker impact storage and corridors. So all those spaces are being looked at and to be at a much more interesting level, maybe even something we report back to you guys and later in June, after the design development set is done. And we've run into some challenges too. So, you know, in doing more investigation, we found out that this parking lot back here at the, behind the gym, that doesn't have the best base. It was, it was, you know, it was cored and found that there was some issues with the stone underneath there is not as deep as we'd like it to be. We found there's some issues with the soil capacity for the addition. So we've got to adjust the foundations a little bit there. And then the auditorium, we got to hang the rigging up the steel, the steel's maxed out. So we're looking at ways to reinforce the steel for that. So these are all normal parts of the process, but as we run into them, we, we, we come up with ways to make the challenges work. And, and a lot of these things we just talked about are baked into Gary's estimate. So, we've just got to keep, I guess, with the caution of the market and also some of the challenges we have on site, we're just going to keep, you know, very close and look at that budget and make sure we're not making any design decisions that are going to add costs to the project. We certainly don't want to do that. But right now, everything looks good. The design is great. We've got a lot of really nice features to it that we'll be excited to show you as we progress. And the last piece is the schedule, so design development is that second phase of design that's due at the end of May. And we're going to go into construction documents and that's where we create the full set of drawings for the state. And that's going to run from basically June, July, and into mid-August. And we're going to try to submit to SED as soon as we can in August. We'd like to hit it in the middle of August if we can, but we'll see where we are. And we don't want to submit a package that's not complete, but once it goes in, then we get in the timeline for SED's review. So, yeah, we're excited, it's going well, and I think it's been a good two months so far. Ted, I think you've already answered my question about what surprises have you seen so far? But did you just say that the surprises that you referenced are included in this, this estimate here? Well, what we're doing is we're adjusting the designs as we go. And we're making sure that we're covered for, say, the steel reinforcing, I think that didn't get included in the estimate. But if, if things start to go up in those areas, we're just going to, we're going to take a finer tune, look at some of the other areas and make sure we're still on budget, that's all. Okay, that's me, the contingency in here then would potentially cover some of the foundational stuff. Yeah, but eventually, it affects scope, but that's what we don't want it to do. We want to get as much scope for you as we can within the budget, so that's what we do. And likely what happens on a lot of these jobs is sadly, we send more to the state than sometimes can be afforded, and that's just the market. We have to make decisions on what the top priorities are. But, you know, I can imagine we may be sending a package down there that could be worth 17 million, but that just gives you more options, I think there's as much options as you could have. But we want the core pieces to be definitely in the project, for sure.
Well, we'll continue to update you weekly on a pre-regular basis. Sometimes we clean mostly on every other week basis, just to keep updated where we are in the process. So we'll, we'll keep providing you these, these updates as they come up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, so as Regina said before the meeting started, it really, there's not a lot to talk about. It seems like we've been eating on such a regular basis and not a lot of updates. But as you pull into the school, it was hung up today, I hope everyone noticed. Fab provided a banner for all of our seniors who are in performing arts, and so we were able to get that hung today. And so please notice all our special and talented seniors as you drive in. Right next to there, we use our senior banners for our athletes. So as everyone knows, tomorrow is our budget vote, so May 18th, and we are having it from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, busy the art form foyer. As you saw, if you came in the main entrance, we're already starting to set up for that, making sure that we are following all of our COVID-19 protocols. We have someone checking temperatures, every pen will be sanitized, every surface that is touched by one person will be sanitized. So really doing the best job possible to make sure that everyone who comes in to vote will be safe. And then we also thought ahead to have our grade six through 12 do a remote learning day. We could not come up with a plan to feed our middle school and high school students and not utilize the area where we hold our vote. So we did need to ask our sixth through 12th grade students to have a remote day. And what is great about the way we've set up our learning model is they really don't miss a beat. They participate in those classes remotely, in person, really at the same level. So, excited that we are able to do this and I'm really thankful that the teachers have taught in a synchronous manner all year long. As Regina said, the prom is this Saturday at Twin Silos. We also have some other celebrations coming up. We will have our scholarship award celebration, June 9th, and that will be in school. And we are doing 9:00 AM our seniors and 12th, junior. And what we do is that we will have parents and family members in for our students. And we're still working out the numbers with the auditorium, we'll let that number out, but we're also going to zoom and record those. And we did this with our National Junior Honor Society and National Honor Society, and we received a lot of positive feedback. People felt that they were able to participate in situations that they typically couldn't in the past. So hopefully, we will have the same response to, to our awards celebration. And then Kelly's been working hard, she planned the kindergarten graduation, and they are going to do it class by class so that they can have many family members in attendance, because that's a very special time for our young ones. And unfortunately, we were unable to do our typical celebration last year, but they did do the caravan marathon day of visiting every kindergarten house last year. But thankful that we'll be able to have our under-year kindergarten graduation celebration here in person.
So, is that June 9th correct?
Yes. It's October, I talked to Suzanne. I'm sorry?
I thought it was the weekend.
I talked to Suzanne this morning, that was the day that she gave me, you know? But I can double check on that, Mike, but that is, I did talk to her this morning. Yes.
I have June 14th.
Suzanne, do you want to unmute yourself, Suzanne, and answer the question? Do I have it right?
Ask you there.
I think you can.
Hey Suzanne, or Mike, could you confirm which date that ceremony is? Is that June 9th?
It's Allison, it is June 9th. It was originally scheduled for the following week, but when they had to change things and try and make it during the school day, it switched to June 9th.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Correct, sorry, I could not unmute quick enough.
Thanks, Mike.
That's good, I think the organization's got to hear that. Okay.
We will get the word out. And then we still are working on our graduation plans, similar to what we did last year. We will have our graduation on campus, it will be held outdoors. We're still working out all the details, but it will be probably very similar to what we had planned last year. Mr. Salatell is working on a contingent plan if we need to move it indoors, if we got inclement weather. So we are planning that and excited to have a special celebration for our 2021 seniors.
Are the board members, I didn't get a final count, is everybody able to come or no? Who needs?
What are we talking about?
Graduation.
Oh, good, yes.
Do you guys need Sherry to order the gowns for you?
I have one.
You have one, all right, so you might want to send out an email, Sherry, because in the past, you've ordered gowns for everybody from Jostens or rented them. So, you didn't have to do that last year, but you might, you might want to look into that and just email the board what they need. Thank you.
All right, and so you may have been hearing that schools have received federal funds and we're still working out the details. And the funds are really broken up into two main areas, the Corona Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act and the American Rescue Plan Act. And as you can see, we are receiving a substantial amount of money in these federal funds. They are in the form of grants and we are still receiving information on how we can spend these monies. They have really recommended that we not utilize them for reoccurring costs, so hiring staff. They are really cautioning us against that because in the year to two years when these are no longer available, we won't be able to continue before having those staff. So there is very specific requirements, we need to have a plan on our website by July 1st. That plan has to incorporate information from parents, teachers, community members about the ideas about what they feel is important to spend that money on. And then obviously, monies need to be spent on enrichment, learning loss, and after-school and summer school activities. So we'll be working to come up with those plans. The original grant allocation and applications are due June 15th. So for community members and parents and teachers, look for a survey soon to come out together that information. And we'll, we'll keep updating you as we put our information.
What was the third thing you said? Richmond, learning loss, and the third thing?
Summer school. And that's it, any questions? Thank you. You're welcome.
Closing in on the end of the year.
You are closing in.
Okay, that brings us to our community relations, John?
Only person that signed into speak is Allison. Allison, if you're going to unmute when you're ready?
Good evening. The first week in May was Teacher Appreciation Week. The day of your last board meeting was actually Teacher Appreciation Day. Although someone who attended the meeting might have missed that fact, since there was no recognition of it by the Board of Education. This, in my opinion, is unconscionable, especially in light of the year we have had. I'd like to take a few minutes to share with the board and community some things I appreciate about the members of the Geneseo Faculty Association. I appreciate, I appreciate those of us who taught from home at the end of last year, oftentimes having to teach our own children at the same time. Those who volunteered their time last spring and summer to help with meal deliveries, community food banks, interview committees, technology pickups, and school opening committees. Those of us who learned new technologies so we could teach during a pandemic, and those in our group who did the teaching to each other. Those of us who have rearranged classrooms to allow as many students as possible to come back to school safely and then rearrange them again as needed. Those of us who have been cleaning desks and everything else our students come in contact with all year. Those of us who have taught our elementary students how to read, write, and learn basic math skills via Zoom. Those who have taught AP classes with the same rigor they have always taught with during none of the same conditions. All of us from grades five through 12, who are teaching students in front of us and at the same time zooming with students at home for the entire year. Our PE staff, who figured out how to keep our students moving and learning while being socially distanced. Our music staff, who moved to spaces where music has never been taught from before, so our kids could find joy in singing together or the challenge of learning an instrument. Our nurses, my gosh, the nurses, we can't even explain how much work they have done this year. Our counselors, who schedules are already jam-packed but make time to work with our struggling students at the drop of a hat. Our teaching assistants, who have filled in so many of the gaps every day with our neediest learners. Our first-year teachers, hopefully this will be the strangest year of your careers. Our teachers who are retiring, who have dedicated decades of their lives to the students of Geneseo. Those of us who run clubs and activities, who have made school a more fun and rewarding place for everyone. Those of us who have coached with professionalism and enthusiasm. Even our losses this year feel like wins just being able to compete. Those of us who somehow during a pandemic and all that brings, put together two drama club productions. Those of us who managed to create a yearbook, even when our students and staff have been masked for the entire year. Those of us who are working on making graduation for the class of 2021 as wonderful as it can be. Those of us who have worked after school during planning periods and lunches with students who needed extra support. Those of us who have worked on focus groups that address student issues of social, emotional health, cultural diversity, and those who are economically disadvantaged. Those of us who have covered classes for each other so that we could get vaccinated. Those of us who are quarantined this year because of their exposure to students. Those of us who had COVID. Those of us who lost loved ones this year, parents, grandparents, siblings, and others, and still showed up with a smile on their faces for their students. I could go on and on, but to sum it up, I appreciate I could go on and on, but to sum it up, I appreciate every one of us who last March with one day's notice, figured out how to serve our students and keep GCS running and through this insane year have continued to do the most amazing job anyone could ask. I am so proud to be a member of this group of dedicated compassionate people. The Board of Education should be proud too. You could not ask for a better group of professionals to be representing GCS. Something like that would have been nice to hear from our Board of Education during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. We will move on to committee reports.
Nothing tonight. With tomorrow's budget, we'll wait until next, just prior to the next meeting.
Community Engagement Strategies again was, that's basically on hold this year. G C F. Again, they're meeting on Zoom and looking over any applications given by teachers that would like some of your funds for special projects in the classrooms. And they did meet last Thursday and just really want to encourage teachers to continue to reach out and apply for grants. They did a overview of where their financial position is and it's very healthy. So they really want to help support new and different creative initiatives for our teachers and students. So please apply. And Policy Committee met tonight. We went over two policies that are required, public access to records and also the code of conduct policies. Again, they are required by law. So basically it was just looking them over, making sure we were clear on what they were asking and what they said. And pretty much they are being left as is. So they will be up for a first read at the next meeting. Okay. And that brings us to Personnel.
Okay. Under Personnel, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items 8.02 to 8.11.
Any discussion on any of these items? Just want to wish Kathy Burke well. She has been a dedicated peer here at Geneseo and is always doing it with a smile on her face, so she will be in this. And then the resignation is with regrets. We do wish Kara Warner well in her new position, but she really should be commended. She created that position in the business office. It was new and she did a fabulous job at it. So we wish her well. Any other questions or discussion? And we, the board also did what you said about those two individuals and anybody retiring who's put in so much time with our district to be leaving for whatever reason, thank you very much for your service and good luck in the future. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried?
Under New Business, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items 9.02 through 9.07.
Second.
Any discussion on any of those items? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried?
And under the Business Office, I'd like to make a motion, we approve items 10.02 and 10.03.
Second.
Need discussion on those two items? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried? That brings us to you, David.
I'd like to make a motion, we enter into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Second.
And in a contract negotiation item.
Second.
All in favor of entering executive session?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried? We'll enter executive session at this point. Thank you to everyone for attending.